Good morning. This is the regular school board meeting for July 22, 2014, and it is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Henderson?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Dr. Krupp?
Here.
Dr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Colton Blackshaw, a fifth grade student from Coquina Elementary who recently passed away. Our thoughts are with his family during this very difficult time. Thank you. Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Bingley?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson and members of the board. On the published agenda, we have two administrative staff recommendations, eighteen consent items not previously submitted for information, four consent items previously submitted for information, four action items, and seven information items. You also have the yellow supplement agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. We have one revision to Item A5 Administrative Staff Recommendations and three consent additions: Item F-15 on sports staff recommendations, Item F-16 on instructional staff recommendations, and Item F-24 on additional relocatable classrooms at Cocoa High School. Under the consent deletion, you will find Item F-10 on the 2014-15 meal price increase, and Item H-35 is an information addition on the 2014-15 meal price increase.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Dr. Murray. Is there any discussion?
No.
Let's vote. If I can. Passes five to zero. Dr. Bingley, will you please inform us about the administrative staff recommendations on this morning's agenda?
Yes, Ms. Henderson, you have one reclassification and one reclassification transfer to accept.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Dr. Krupp. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Let's vote. The administrative staff has been approved, five to... Wait, no, that isn't... Mine didn't come up yet. Did everybody vote? It's not up on the screen as a... I don't know how everybody voted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The administrative staff recommendations have been approved, five to nothing. That brings us to the recognition of visitors and guests or staff.
There are no recognition items this morning.
Dr. Bingley, are there any resolutions or proclamations?
We also have no resolutions or proclamations on today's agenda.
Next is the presentation portion, Dr. Bingley.
We have no formal presentations at this time. However, as I think the board is aware, we'll have a brief presentation during the information portion of the agenda.
Okay. That brings us to public comment. I don't have a list up here.
Coming.
Oh. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented and answers to questions specific to the district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Please speak into the microphone and state your name. We have... Why do I have two different ones? Oh, okay. All right. I have three speakers: Mr. Christensen, Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Bennett. Mr. Christensen?
My name is Arthur Christensen. I live at 2250 Windsor Drive, Merrid Island, Florida. And I'm interested in quality of education, image of the school system, and best for the taxes.
Can you speak...
Excuse me.
There you go. Thank you.
I'll repeat it. I'm interested in quality of education, because I had a lot myself, image of the system, and the most for the taxes. That's one reason I'm upset. And most board looks fairly friendly this morning. I'm glad to see that. I saw this article in here in the newspaper last Sunday. As you know, I like to read newspapers, make comments on it sometimes also. And I see you scheduled this meeting to save money, which I think is a step in the right direction. I am disappointed that last Christmas, during school vacation, the school bell was left on, banging away, wearing out, that would require early replacements probably than if it had been saved. And the big outside floodlights were on, day and night, shining in the sun during the day. And that lasted seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And I wrote letters to every one of you, hoping that you would take some action to save a little bit of money. I realize it's not a huge amount, but small amounts usually ends up to a huge sum, which I don't need to tell you. So my letters were ignored. And my question is, do you answer any correspondence? It's kind of frustrating when you're a taxpayer and you see taxes, in my opinion, are wasted. And then we have some of the other problems that I wrote to you previously that nothing has been done about, that I know of. And I was hoping that you would take action, or at least alleviate some of the problems for the upcoming school year. So far, I haven't seen any. And what I'm telling you is, the way I have seen it from my residence, when the school board reactivated Stevenson, was fine, a small school, everybody was happy. In fact, the principal even invited me over there to talk, which I appreciated. But then the school expanded, and all that stuff went away. And the school board failed to realize or take action, what are we going to do with all these people we're bringing in, since the school is now a school of choice? And schools located entirely within the residential area, there's homes all the way around it, schools in the front, and there's a park in the back and on the west side. And it's today, it's an almost 100 percent drive to a school of choice, and that has created many dangerous situations that unfortunately, if I step out of the door, I see sometimes. And the school eliminated corridor busing a year ago, which by itself was okay as far as saving money and so forth. But there was no leadership or management on what to do with the mass invasion of vehicle traffic.
Your time is up, Mr. Christensen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I make a conclusion?
Sure.
All right. My suggestion is, compliance with posted traffic signs, all loading and unloading on school property or county property will go a long way for student safety and security, as well as the safety for the people in the community. It would also provide access for emergency vehicles, if needed by the community, at all times.
Thank you.
By not blocking the streets.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Richard Smith.
Good morning, Richard Smith, Brevard Federation of Teachers. For months and months and months now, it seems like, people have been saying, "Where are the teachers on the halfpenny? Where are the teachers on the halfpenny?" And as you know, I'm the president of BFT, but I'm not king of BFT. And one of the things we were doing was trying to do a solid job of making sure that we understood what our members felt and were willing to do. I was told that a poll that was in a neighborhood of 100 to 150 would be an adequate poll for the size of our 4,800 members, 4,800 teachers that we represent. And I was a little uncomfortable with that number. It seemed like a kind of a small number to me. He was a professional poller, I asked about that. But anyway, I let the... We have a survey that's out on what's called LeaderNet on AFT website, and we have just hit 500 folks. And the percentage of those members who... And these are members only. These are not just teachers in Brevard. They're members of Brevard Federation of Teachers. Just a hair, under 80 percent of the teachers, are in favor of supporting the halfpenny. So I'm here today to tell you that Brevard Federation of Teachers' official position on the halfpenny will be to support it. We're in favor of it. We understand the necessary capital expenses that need to happen. We want boys and girls to have air conditioning. We want boys and girls to have safe buses. And so I'm here to tell you that. I do want to share with you the struggle that we've had, and many of... By the way, many of those folks who weighed in on that survey, weighed in on that survey before the bargaining even began, or was very early in the bargaining. I want you to know that I'm going to do everything I can do to get my members to not only vote, because, let's face it, that's important, but also to work in our political plan, walking to houses and making phone calls and that kind of thing. So I want you to know we're going to do that. And I do appreciate the, I guess, tolerance. Some of you have been impatient, wanting me to move faster, but I wanted to make sure that our members were solidly on board, because it's a difficult thing. There's a lot of factors in this, as you guys know. And so, anyway, I want to come this morning to tell you, and I've told you, so I guess I should sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Bennett?
Good morning. Good morning, Dr. Bingley. Good morning, members of the board. We usually like to sit back during the first hour and a half of the board meeting and work on our comments and work on our speeches, so you kind of caught us off guard by getting rights of public... Not that that's a complaint. Every board meeting, every board meeting should go this fast. But I want to talk in very general terms about what's happening at the bargaining table. We won't get into specific topics. I know you prefer that, just stay at the table where it should be. But there's a very positive tone, I would say. We're working well together. As we finish issues, it's not a matter of "we won" or "you won." It's win-win all around. My goal, our goal, and I think it's everybody's goal at the table, Jim Hickey's team, my team, it's everybody's goal for teachers to come back to work this year and see changes in their lives, changes in their work conditions, where they can really say things are different and things are better. And we're on that road. Now, we're at a crossroads, and I'm not going to get into particular topics. You don't want particular topics right here, but we're at a crossroads right now if we're going to finish this up or not. I urge you, let's not have another year where we go to teachers and say, "There, you're happy." Because we tried that last year, we saw what happened. We had to vote no on a contract, we had to come to you, and many of you answered our challenge to go... I mean, all of you answered our challenge to go into schools, to talk to teachers, and then you came back and said, "Hey, how about that?" BFT all those years was saying too much standardized testing. BFT all those years was saying too much data collection. BFT all those years was saying, "Wow, the evaluation system is a mess." BFT all those years is saying, "Wow, the morale is down in schools." You said, "Wow, we're right." They were right. And you took a lot of positive proactive steps through the spring. Then I'm going to give you all credit. I'll give credit tomorrow at the table. When teachers come back to school, we're going to talk about some of those things that you guys took care of without us even having to negotiate them, like the evaluation system and standardized testing, and now we're looking at some data collection things. You've done a lot, and we've gone far away down the roads to making teachers genuinely appreciative. Got a few more topics to cover, we can get there. As Richard said, he's president, he's not king. I have a hand in writing the newsletter, the website, the Facebook, whatever. I can go out there and I could tell teachers, "Support that halfpenny, it's the right thing to do. You know you have to rally around your employer." I can say that. But teachers need to genuinely be appreciated by this board, by this district, by their employer. What makes BFT special and all teachers' unions special compared to the rest of the union movement, not trying to pick on other unions, but what makes us special is that we are always ready to rally around our employer. We're ready to rally around our profession. And this workforce needs to do this in the fall. And it starts with coming back to school with a good contract, feeling satisfied and appreciative, and then we're really ready to get to the work that's important, which is helping those kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
I just have a request.
Yes, Mrs. Neese?
Not a comment, but a request, but Mr. Christensen has written us many times over the past year. Since we have a new director of security here today, there's been a change last year. It's been one or two years. Area superintendent, if maybe they could, while he's here today, arrange just to have him share with them his concerns. I would just... He's made the time to come and see us today after riding us for a number of years, and I just would like him to have the opportunity to talk with Lieutenant Scully and with Mrs. Klein.
I would think that should also be Mr. Theodore and Mr. Creach.
Absolutely.
So that we can get the lights, the bells, and the busing. And if you guys would like to, if you'd like to go meet with some of them, that would be... If you guys could make a way to help Mr. Christensen, that would be helpful.
And I had the wrong area superintendent. I apologize.
Yes. It's Ms. Reinhardt.
Ms. Reinhardt.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. The board wishes to thank the morning speakers. And Mr. Christensen, nice to see you. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. That's for the action item.
You might want to explain to them.
Because it's in the...
Not yet.
It's a different part of the agenda.
Explain to Paul that he's going to speak during the information item.
Yeah. Okay. That moves us on to the consent agenda, Dr. Bingley.
During the information line. He's wondering why he's not speaking.
Oh, you don't get to speak yet, because we are not to the action items yet.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to do consent first, and we'll get to you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. There are 22 items under this category, eighteen consent items not previously submitted for information, and four consent items with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items? I would like to pull F-24.
F what?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay. Please move that, Pam, and I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of the items that were pulled for discussion.
To approve.
Oh, I'll second that.
Moved by Dr. Krupp, seconded by Mrs. Neese. And now we will discuss...
Do we have to vote?
Oh, yes. Please vote. Geez, what is with this computer this morning? Consent items were approved, five to zero. And Item F-24. My comments on F-24 are that I want to see changes... And Dr. Bingley and I have discussed this, but I wanted the board to be aware that in the student accommodation plan, there were... This particular school violates both the outgoing and the ingoing policy intentionally. So that if you're over 90 percent, you're supposed to allow people to go, but then you don't let them leave the school. That allows your population to grow, although I'm told that that's not the reason this is happening. That part of the policy needs to be put back, removed. If... There are exceptions, that sometimes you can make an exception to out of, you know, for leaving a school.
Right.
The policy says that if you are above 90 percent, you can let... You should be letting kids leave, because...
But if it's above 70 percent, you can leave.
Maybe Dr. ...
Well, Cocoa has historically been frozen to outgoing. It will no longer be frozen to outgoing.
Okay.
And the problem is, when you freeze it to outgoing, and you're already at the 90 percent mark, then of course you go up, and now you're asking for portables. I just have a problem with us allowing that frozen portion to continue. I understand that more people are moving to Cocoa, but...
Can I add to that?
Yes.
Mrs. Henderson makes a good point, because the closing to ingoing and outgoing was made early in the year. I have the opposite issue for a school like Seapark, which at the time the plan came out, they were open to outgoing. Well, due to budget cuts and discussions, we've had, in some instances, a mass exodus, which would now put it frozen to outgoing if we looked at current numbers, but they're still allowed to leave based on, "We didn't freeze it to outgoing back in February." So I not only have an issue with the way we implement that policy in terms of how we've handled Cocoa, I have the same concern for schools we've allowed outgoing. Now we've dropped below that percentage, but we're still letting people go. So I think we need to relook at as... How we use this policy in general, because obviously you've got two examples here today that say it's not working.
Yeah, the exceptions to the policy are part of the problem. We have policies in place that say if you're less than 60 percent, then we're not going to let you go.
Less than 70.
Seventy percent. You know, but when you violate that and you say, "Oh, well, we're going to let anybody leave the school," and it takes it down to 50 percent, then that's not good. So we do need to take a better look at that. This policy, the changes to the student accommodation plan occurred in April. Portables were moved to Cocoa in May. So clearly, someone knew that this was going to happen. There is a new section in the student accommodation plan, put there, I think, on the board's request, because we were having area superintendents wanting us to put portables on schools that were at 70 percent capacity, and we said, "No. It's not over 90 percent. You don't have an issue. You don't need them." So in the student accommodation plan, there is a new section in there that shows us what schools are going to get portables and which ones are not, or basically which ones are. So I feel that this was known before, if in fact you needed it. You went ahead and moved the portables anyway. I understand that it's still a part of what was budgeted for moving portables, but I have a huge problem with this for a couple more reasons. One, it is... We have one year of data on this school. We don't have two years. We don't know what is it, if there's a trend or there is not, but we're going to go ahead and do this. So those are my concerns, so I want to take a better look at this in the future. I don't want this to happen again, and I'm sure the other board members don't like having to do this at the last minute either, but I'm not going to speak for you. But I think that an entire look at this and being more proactive and informing the board in a more timely manner would be appropriate. And as Mrs. Neese said, another look at those frozen schools to outgoing into incoming needs to have another look. Yes, Mrs. Neese?
It would seem to me, Dr. Bingley, that there ought to be a provision that although a decision was made in, say, February, March, or even April of who was outgoing, who was ingoing, there needs to be a second look. Just because we made a decision not to freeze a school to outgoing in February or March doesn't mean we shouldn't do it now. And for the same thing with Cocoa High. Maybe they were frozen, now they no longer need to be. You know, I don't like when I call and ask about a percentage, the answer I was given it was, "Well, it was in the progression book that they were open to outgoing, so we have to allow it." Well, we can readdress that. And so I'd like some revision to that policy that allows us to do that for both of these instances.
We will work toward that. Right, Ms. Theodore?
Okay, I will move to approve.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It was my understanding, I thought these portables were already on campus, they just need to be activated.
They were moved to the campus. Any monies that need... So they were not there. They already do have portables on the school grounds. These were moved in May, because they needed to be moved at a time when the guy who could move them was in town. So they're already at the school. The extra costs that are incurred now will be to hook up. You need the water, the electricity, sidewalks, and the covered walkways. That will be costing the extra money. So that's why they were there.
Need ADA compliance and all that good stuff.
Exactly. Okay, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mrs. Neese. Any further discussion? Thank you. Different when you do it yourself. This passes four to one. Message sent. Where are we? I guess we don't need to take a break. That moves us to the action agenda, Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. There are four action items for you to consider on today's agenda. Item G-27 is to hold a public hearing and approve the revisions of the school board policies in the 0000 series.
Okay, the public hearing... The public hearing for the 0000 series is open. Does anybody wish to speak? On the 0000 series? Are you going to talk on the 0, or are you doing the 2,000?
Yep, going to 0149.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good morning. My name is Paul Chenares. I am a candidate for school board District 1 seat, and my address is 5493 Jamaica Road, Cocoa, Florida. I wanted to address the bylaw change under Staff Communications to the Board, 0149.3A. What I'm reading here, and what bothers me, is the chance of fear that preferably submitted through the superintendent will become the rule. What this seems to do is cut off direct information to the board. Okay. And I feel the board can only do an excellent job in proportion to the accurate information they receive, and firsthand information is the most accurate. And I have to question, what could possibly be the ethical reason for limiting access to our elected officials? Since, I mean, are the board members inundated with complaints now that they cannot answer? Or, you know, considering that BPS is the largest employer in the county, and staff, our parents, and taxpayers, they're, in essence, limiting their access to the board members with this? Are we having a discussion?
That was a policy, if you go to the current... I'm jumping in here, Mrs. Henderson, but 149 points, the one you're talking about, I don't know if it was in the agenda. That part of that policy, if you go to the general website, it's not listed there, because we deleted that a year or two ago, that particular policy.
No, it is on here.
It's on that one?
So I pulled this off the web... So, I pulled this off the, the website last night.
So it's on as an attachment, like on our beginning. Okay. We voted to get rid of that two years ago. Go ahead. I took your time.
So I'm, I'm confused now. You know, you're nodding your head and telling me this is not really part of the, one forty-nine three is not part of the policy?
It is a part of the policy, but what you're saying about it, Harold?
Okay.
It is, the, you're not, I'll let Harold.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, I understand it. It's a, it's a proposed revision to the policy that was recommended by Neola. It's a company that the district contracts with to update policies, and it does not serve to limit the employees, staff members, taxpayers, or anybody else from communicating directly with the board about matters of public concern. Am I right?
Sorry to interrupt, but Mrs. Neese is right. It's, it's not current policy. Neola, what happens is we have to review policy on a regular basis by law, and Neola has somehow grabbed, they're putting it back in there because they probably looked at something from the past, but that policy is not in our current list.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to rectify why this is even in there. We do agree with you, just to be clear.
Right.
Right, well, it does, but even as it's written, it doesn't preclude teachers from talking to board members.
No, but where you say preferably, I'm, my fear is that this will be made rule. And, and you could, you know, it can be instituted as rule. And we move on to Section C, the social interaction section. And this, to me, seems to be an attempt, once again, to stifle the board members from speaking openly in social areas, which includes certainly social media, which you see a lot of information flying around and a lot of, people go to that to get their information about the school system, even if the information's right or wrong. They, you know, this would certainly, this, this section, Section C, certainly is directed to stop any open forums on social media and any, that any staff participates in, since an open forum could be viewed by any board member. And I would hate to see, which I have heard complaints about at a local level, such as a school, that any custodian staff, teacher, baker, would complain on an open forum and get reprimanded for doing that, which, i- if that's the case, you're stifling their discontent, which I think is the wrong direction, especially with all of our talk about transparency and openness that I've heard from the board and the superintendent. And this is, once again, a fear that I have, that you're trying to shut out social media, and that it can be used that way. And I certainly like you folks to review that and, and disregard this from the bylaws.
I don't know if you want me to respond. I mean, I know what's happened here. I can tell you that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No.
What I believe has happened, and this is just my, my opinion, is this used to be in board policy. This was something that Dr. Depatry had in place when he was superintendent, which I was not happy about. When he left, we pulled that out there. Neola looks at our policies, and for some reason, they wanted to put it back in. If you go to our website, which is what's currently in place, this particular one that you're talking about's not in there. It used to be years ago, we pulled it.
It's social media.
And that is my intention again today, is not to have that as a part of that, because there should be free communication, and you shouldn't have to run everything through the superintendent, or Brian would never get any sleep. So that-
Absolutely.
That's how I, that's how I read this, how I understood it. I'm glad that people caught that, because it used to be in there. I was on the board when we took it out, and it's like, I don't want it back in this year either. So I agree.
Great, great. Thank you for listening to me, giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I find it concerning that, that there would be any inference that we would be restricting any employee to speak freely, but I would call the board's attention to letter C, social interaction, where it says that however individual board members are not authorized to act on behalf of the board unless in an open public session. And then it goes on to say, it will be considered to be unacceptable conduct for individual board members to discuss with members of the staff, personnel grievances, and other complaints. That would, I think they're talking about, I interpret that to mean that they're talking about the legal contractual grievances. And if that is in fact what this is implying, it would be inappropriate for us to speak to staff about formally submitted grievances, because those are contractual processes, legal processes, and we as individual board members would certainly want to refrain from speaking to staff about those issues. That would need to go, what a board member would, would need to do in that case, would be to refer the employee to the proper district level person.
It's not a board issue.
But that's under Code of Conduct. That's already covered earlier in the Code of Conduct.
Okay, but I have, it's under letter C in, in, so, so perhaps we need some clarification there in terms of, you know, like I say, I, I interpret personnel grievances as the formalized process. I do not see that as generic.
Prior to that.
Prior to that. Barbara.
Thanks. Prior to that, it indicates, let me get there. Well, I can't find it now, but prior to that, it makes it clear that the policy is not intended in any way to deny any staff member constitutional right of free speech, or the right to appeal, or otherwise address the board on important matters. I don't think the board's intention is to not, not allow people to contact us. I would certainly oppose that. But in a formal sense, such as I indicated, the personnel grievance is a formal process, I would think that board members would exercise caution on those types of matters. Harold?
Yeah, Madam Chairman. Dr. Murray, you're correct. Now, this area of the law is, there is a lot of case law in this, and there's a difference between items that are, things that are matters of public concern and things that are basically employee, employer matters regarding free speech and all that. From what I'm hearing, there's enough concern about the language of this proposed policy recommendation. As you pull it off this agenda, we'll take another look at it and bring it back if you think it's appropriate.
Good.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are going to-
I'll be, oh, Misty Belford, candidate for school board District One, sixteen thirty North Singleton Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I'll be brief, because it sounds like from the discussion that you all have been having, that we're all moving in the same direction on that. The only thing that I want to point out, and actually is the portion that Dr. Murray mentioned, the communication protocol is not intended to deny any staff member his or her constitutional right of freedom of speech. And I would encourage you to keep in mind, as you are discussing the, discussing the intricacies of this particular policy, I think, going back to the, the reference to perception that you all have heard me bring up numerous times, if you feel the need to put in a statement in a policy that says that you are not intending to violate free speech, I think there's probably a problem within that policy that needs to be looked at closer. And I think especially in this timeframe, where we're trying to build relationships with the community and make sure that we are in fact encouraging open communication, that we would want to steer clear of anything that might prompt us to feel the need to, to say that we're not removing free speech. So thank you for your consideration for removing it and looking at it in more depth.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wish to speak?
Maybe a motion to remove that?
Yeah, could we get a motion?
So move.
Motion by Dr. Murray, and seconded by Mrs. Neese to remove item-
Zero, one, four, nine.
What is the number? Zero, one, four, nine point three.
The motion is to remove.
Motion is to remove, so council can review it again.
Remove it from the agenda.
Remove zero, one, forty, that whole section from the agenda.
Oh, we're not removing all zero policies? Let's say all went together. I guess I was thinking the motion was just to pull the zero policies. You just want to do the one?
The one.
Okay.
Yeah, just the one. So the motion is to remove-
No, remove.
Remove.
From the agenda.
From the agenda, the zero, one, four, nine-
All the whole, that whole document.
The whole document of P zero, zero, one, four, zero.
Version.
Version two.
Point.
To remove that at this time for further review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. So it was, motion carries five to zero. Dr. Bingley?
I, I just want to clarify, as you mentioned, there's not a soul up here, and I want myself included, that has ever contended that we would not want individuals to be able to communicate openly with, and, and so I just want to make very clear. I think you know that from the start, so.
Can I, can I just clarify for procedural purposes here? We just voted, and what it sounded like was a motion to remove this from the, that item from the agenda, but did we vote on this hearing item? I don't think we did that.
No, we have to do that next.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
So now what are the wishes of the board?
What number is that?
Did you close the hearing on the-
Now, we-
Did you close the hearing?
Okay.
If anyone else wants to speak, ask to-
The public hearing on-
Policy review.
Policy review zero, zero, zero has been closed. Okay, now what are the wishes of the board? Move to approve policy review zero, 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 zero.
With noted that.
Noted that the removal of-
One, four, nine.
One, four, oh, oh, one, four, nine.
Second.
One, four, zero.
For that whole section.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Dr. Murray and seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve all the items for policy zero, 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 with the exception of P zero, zero, one, four, zero, V two, version two, that will be reviewed later. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Ms.
Yeah, we have three more to go.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Members of the board, item G twenty-eight is to hold a public hearing and approve the revisions of the school board policies in the two thousand series.
Public hearing for the two thousand series, policy review two thousand series is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to policy two thousand? Going once? Going twice? There are no speakers at this time. The public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
To accept policy reviews for two thousand.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Let's vote. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Members of the board, item G twenty-nine is to hold a public hearing and approve the revisions of the school board policies in the five thousand series.
It's a rotary fine.
Public hearing is now open for the five thousand zero, series policy review. Anyone wish to speak to the five thousand series policy reviews? Going once? There are no speakers at this time. The public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Dr. Krupp, to accept the policy review of the five thousand series. Any discussion? Let's vote. The policy review five thousand series has been approved, five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Members of the board, item G thirty is to hold a public hearing and approve the revisions of the school board policies in the eight thousand series.
Public hearing is now open for the eight thousand series policy review. Are there any speakers? Are there any speakers for the policy eight thousand policy review? There are no speakers at this time. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Ziegler, approved by, seconded by Dr. Murray. Any discussion?
Just for clarification for the listening audience, as I mentioned briefly before, is that these policies are up for review by law. By, I believe it's now every two years they need to be reviewed. And they're reviewed by an organization called Neola, and what they do is they take existing policies and they align them with statutory changes to make sure that we're compliant with those changes. And so that's basically what ninety-nine point nine percent of these policies are, are being voted on for, is that they've been looked at, they've been aligned with statute, and we're approving them. So everybody understands. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Let's vote. Policy review for eight thousand series has been approved, five to nothing. Okay, where are we now? Okay, that brings us to the information agenda. Dr. Bingley? The information agenda includes for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items at this time. Dr. Bingley?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Members of the board, there are seven agenda items under the information category, and if it pleases the board, I, I would like to request that Judy Preston, Assistant Superintendent of Financial Services, and Ken Thornton, Director of Food and Nutrition Services, provide the board with a brief presentation regarding information, item H thirty-five on two thousand fourteen fifteen meal prices. So, Ms. Preston, Mr. Thornton?
Good morning. At the recent board workshop, the board asked for some additional information related to the food service program. So Kevin's going to kind of give you a quick run-through, has a quick PowerPoint. As you know, we discussed that day, the challenges of trying to not only deal with the new federal requirements, but to also provide a nutritional meal for the students. I've asked him to include some examples for you to give you some kind of contrast, because I think one of the things that we continue to struggle with, aside from the price and the challenge of dealing with, better food costs more, as Kevin says, is the issue of what the students are used to eating in the outside world, when they're out traveling around, when they're out in their daily lives, whether it's on the weekend or in the evening or whatever. So he's included some of those contrasts for you to give you some kind of an idea, and we have a recommendation for you for the board's consideration. Kevin?
Thank you and good morning. I'm going to jump right on in and just begin with talking about, looking at where we currently are trending with our revenue sources. And I think it's important for us to be able to realize that our, the revenue sources that support the program, to be able to run the day-to-day operations with regards to the, the functions with the food service. You'll, you'll note that, that the, the food service operations budget is around a thirty million dollar operation for the district, and you can break down our, our revenue sources into basically five different areas of categories here within the, within the pie chart here. You'll notice that sixty-three percent, which represents eighteen point one million dollars of revenue, is generated with just our federal and state reimbursements. And you'll notice that, that we also include in there that we have the federal commodities of five point four percent, which represents one point six million dollars. If you look at that as a whole, that's two thirds of our revenues coming from the federal state reimbursements, which is a lot of dollars being generated by, by that category, coal. You also look to see that if you include the food sales regular school lunch at nine point five percent, that represents two point, the eight million dollars, and that represents three quarters of our revenue just coming from the revenue that we generate locally for a reimbursable meal for breakfast and lunch, and also the meals, the, the reimbursements that we receive. Not to downplay Ella Cart, Ella Cart represents two, twenty-one point five percent of our revenue, which is six point five million dollars, decrease over last year by five hundred thousand dollars. And we're seeing that as a whole with regards to the impact it's having on the program. And then last- And then lastly is the other local source, is 3.1%, which represents $1.1 million. And that's really the à la carte sales for adults, special functions, and vending machines. And that encapsulates our total revenue that we receive for the program. Just to give you a brief history on where we trended a couple of years ago and where we are now, and it's pretty stark information about where we are as a whole. If you look at five years ago, if you look at the history there, that federal state reimbursements five years ago was at 46%, and we're trending now at 60%. So you see a major shift taking place with regards to our federal and state reimbursements. And then you also see the other stark difference here is our à la carte. If you look at our à la carte program, again, five years ago is at 28%. It's now trending around 22%, and we predict that to go down to about 17% next year. So there's major changes that are taking place with regards to where the revenue sources are coming from, and that's really been dictated by the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010 that just keeps on giving and giving and giving over the course of the last couple of years. The last time we talked with the board, they talked about, there were some questions about the current revenue and our current meal price, and how that correlates with, based upon student status. And I just want to walk you through real quickly with looking at the K6 grade level here with regards to the free status of a child. Our federal reimbursement rate is actually currently at $3.01. This is last year's information. We received no local funding from the student that pays for the meal, so the total funding is around, is $3.01. If you include our total cost of a meal, which is our total cost with labor at $2.17, you can see the difference is $2, excuse me, $0.84 in profit or monies that we can reinvest back into the program. The same can be said with the reduced. The reduced rate is $2.61. We collect locally $0.40 from a child that comes through the line with a reimbursable meal, bringing the total funding to around $2.31. The cost of the meal stays the same at $2.17, with the difference there of $0.84 per meal. The big kicker here is the paid. The paid reimbursement rate is only $0.36. $0.36, we collect locally $1.70 at the elementary level for a meal that we prepare there at the school level. The total funding, if you add the reimbursement rates and the paid dollars that we receive from the student, is $2.06. The meal cost is the same with labor, $2.17, and you can see that there's a shortfall of $0.11 per meal that we serve at the paid rate. If you look down here, there's a bigger difference, a contrasting difference between grades nine through 12, looking only at the paid rate here down at the very bottom. It talks about the reimbursement rate still being at $0.36. We collect $1.80 for local sales. The total funding is $2.16. The cost of a meal at the K through nine through 12 grade level is $2.45, and it's a shortfall of $0.29 that we are showing for every paid meal that we currently ring up on the register. And in the past, we've offsetted those costs with the à la carte and also the free reduced element there. So we wanted to, we strategized to keep our lunch price low, to encourage participation all along the way. So that was the strategy there. There are concerns coming forward with regards to what's happening in the meal arena, with regards to the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, that's impacting our program in the years ahead. Student participation is critical to our operation. Without participation, the staff hears over and over again that we have no program. There is no program if we don't have student participation in our program. And we're very proud of that, that we've been able to go through the different level of changes over the course of the last two years with both breakfast and lunch, and not lose a considerable amount of participation. Last year, we implemented the breakfast new meal pattern, and we lost about, I think it was 1.7% participation, which is acceptable with the changes that we've made. And we're seeing and working very closely with our nutritionists and our meeting with kids as a means to be able to get feedback from them, and we're constantly making changes to be able to do this. But you'll see the blue bar consistently remains pretty consistent across the board, other than the fall from last year, which was the change that we made to the breakfast implementation of the new meal pattern. If you look at the red bar, which represents the lunch participation, you'll see that it was consistent with when we were not, when we did not make a change. You'll see a slight drop of a 1.5%, a 1.7% drop in lunch participation in the 2012 timeframe, and, but we're pleased to be able to see that we're getting some of that back this past year. So we've been able to pick up 0.7% back on participation and being able to recalculate that to be able to make sure that we're gaining those kids back. The big change, like I mentioned before, is à la carte. If you look at the blue line, the blue line represents both à la carte and the reimbursable lunch meal in there. As I mentioned before, we've lost probably about a half a million dollars in revenue for the à la carte. Green line, sorry, the green line, the green line that we have for that piece of it. But the big change is, again, the à la carte, the dropping of à la carte, which we hope that would transition into the new meal pattern to be able to do that. Just to give you a brief history on what's transpired over the last three years, you know, phase one, we implemented in July 2012 for the 12, 13, 14, 12, 13 school year, which basically revamped the whole lunch program, where we had to go in and redo and meet the new meal pattern that was required by the federal level. This is also where we were required, the student must take a fruit or vegetable to be able to make it a reimbursable meal, and also the whole grain. At this time, only the whole grain requirement was 50% of the items had to be whole grain, where that is changing here shortly. We also had the vegetable subgroups that were in place at that point in time. There's six vegetable subgroups that must be met in a five-day period for us to be able to offer the kids, and that's, again, that's the first round of changes that we went through. Phase two happened in July 2013 for the 13, 14 school year, which is the breakfast changes, and again, implementing the whole new breakfast meal pattern. Again, the whole grain requirement being only at 50% last year to be able to do that. As we entered into the 2014-15 school year, which is basically phase three, we now have a couple of changes that are impacting both breakfast and lunch. The big change for lunch is the sodium target level one that will be required for us to implement. So sodium level, the requirement for sodium level is being drawn down for us to be able to meet that. We feel we can meet the sodium level target one reduction for the next school year, and the staff has worked hard to do that. The big change is now everything has to be whole grain-rich, 100% whole grain-rich product in our bread offering. So that's a major change for students that don't have that palate of whole grain in their diet. So that's the challenge that we're facing. We've already received that there's a waiver for pasta out there right now for the pasta change, so there's some cracks within the changes, and, you know, we're trying to drag our feet to be able to make those changes take place. The big change for breakfast is that we're moving from a half-cup requirement to a full-cup requirement for breakfast. A student doesn't have to take the full cup, but it must be offered for the students at all grade levels to be able to do that. However, the big change for us is our à la carte change, the smart snacks and school standards. That's the big change for next school year. We will be implementing the interim final rule, not even the final rule from the federal level. We're still implementing the interim final rule, which is not even, you know, we're, it's not even finalized, and we're being forced to be able to move in that direction. Just as a quick glance of what the changes are based upon the new standard right now is that all whole grain, that all the grains have to be whole grain-rich products, or must have the first ingredient of a fruit, vegetable, dairy product, or a protein food item, or be a combination food that contains at least a quarter cup of fruit or vegetable, or contain 10% of the daily value of one of the following nutrients, calcium, potassium, vitamin D, or dietary fiber. You know, that doesn't make for a whole lot of interest there for our à la carte students to want to participate when these are the requirements now that we've got to face. If you look at this calorie and the snack limits, you know, that's not a whole lot of calories. You know, you think about this when you go to the store, you pick up those 100-calorie bags of treats and cookies or whatever. You get five cookies in that bag, basically, you may get 10 cookies in that bag with regards to being only having a 200-calorie limit, and the sodium level less than 200 milligrams for a snack item. If you look at an entree item, less than 350 calories. That's not an entree, that's more of a side item for what we're offering there, and the sodium being less than 400 milligrams per item. Total fat's basically the same, total fat's less than 35% of calories, stress rate of fat less than 10% of calories, and zero trans fats are the requirements. And then, again, less than 35% of weighted from total sugars and foods. So there's not a whole lot that's going to be able to be offered at this point in time, so we're dragging our feet to be able to make these changes to understand the piece there. You know, as we, you know, as we come to the board, you know, there's a lot of times that we get criticized about the foods that we offer in our cafeteria. You know, it's comparison of what is out in the marketplace versus what's out there and what we can and can't serve. But I need to point out that when you make everything whole grain, when you take out the fat, you take out the sodium, there's not a whole lot left for us to be able to offer. So those are the things that we've got to overcome. When the students come to the podium and talk about how awful the food is in the cafeteria, it's we're being held to a much higher standard with regards to what we're able to offer. I just picked out a few things, as Judy mentioned earlier, about, you know, what do we do versus what the industry is offering? You know, this is a personal pan pizza that's out there, a 6-cent pepperoni. You can tell that our calories is only at 330 calories versus the industry at 620. You can see that their sodium's almost three times as high as what we're offering, 480 milligrams, and the fat, again, that fat adds flavor, that 10 grams versus 28 grams, and our crust must now be whole grain. So that just is another double wham for the pizza sales in the cafeteria for us to be able to do that. And we'll be offering that for $1.75, but you know, you see in the industry, it's over $4. You know, cookie sales are very important to me. We've been able to keep cookies, you know, but they're whole grain. And this is just another example of our calorie counts less, our sodium's a little high, which, you know, I'm not sure why that is, but it is, but the fat grams is three versus eight, which is very structurally different between the two, and ours is whole grain, again, to be able to have, to be, in order for us to be able to offer it. The breaded chicken sandwich is a very popular item in the cafeterias that we offer in our schools. You know, we compared it to competitors, you know, the calorie count's similar, but if you look at that sodium level, again, the sodium level is extremely high versus what we're currently offering. Again, the fat, just want to point out, our bun must be whole grain, the breading on the chicken must be whole grain, and that's not what the kids are seeing out in the competitors. And there's also deep fried, you know, that deep frying texture that it provides and to be able to do. And lastly, you know, the other popular item for us is the chicken nuggets with small fries. Again, looking at the calorie counts, very different than what we're offering. Again, looking at the fat, whole grain, deep fried, and the cost differential that we're being able to offer to be able to do that. You know, when we look at the revenue and, you know, key performance indicators for us is our revenue expenses, our fund balance, make sure that those all stay in check. And that's one of the things that staff knows that we're watching and monitoring. There's not a day that I don't go by looking at sales and making sure that we're hitting the sale goals that we've established on a daily basis. You know, you can see on the chart that the revenue has basically stayed the same. The blue line represents the revenue, it's basically stayed the same constant over the last couple of years. We're seeing that the trend is, is expenses are continually rise, which isn't any different than what you're seeing at your home grocery store shopping and being able to see that piece of it. So expenses are continually rising, produce costs more, whole grain costs more, and being able to do that. And you'll see that we're planning that, you know, the 14, 15, 14 school year, our 13, 14 school year, this year, that we are dipping into the fund bout ever so slightly. That is the plan that we have had in place, but we're just trying to hold and maintain where we are currently with our operation. Excuse me. What we know right now is anticipating the impact for the 14, 15 school year, as you know, the fruit requirement for breakfast, the additional whole grain requirement, and that we all understand that healthier foods cost more money. Talking with our vendors, our produce, our mainline food distributor, we anticipate a 4% to 6% increase to overall food costs this next year, due part to the drought, excuse me, to the drought and to the higher gas prices. And then our student participation, we're just trying to strategize on where that's going to end up, and this is where we've trying to maintain our participation. Breakfast, we look to remain flat. The à la carte is going to take a severe hit, and we hope to offset that with the federal reimbursements and the local revenue that we collect from the students for participating in the program. So that's what we anticipate, you know, I hope that we can whittle down that 20%. That's the goal for us to be able to do. That's not where I want to be coming back and saying that that's what we ended up with, but that's where the reality is, what we're planning right now. And before you this evening, excuse me, before you this morning, it's odd that it's difficult to, this morning, that you have the three price increases or three options to consider about pricing for next school year. You know, option A is do nothing and not have a price increase for the 14, 15 school year. Option B is to increase lunch prices by 10 cents, and basically, it's a 6% increase across the board, raising it to $1.80 and $1.90, and then looking at multiple years to being able to come back and say we need to relook at that and be able to increase lunch prices as needed as we move forward. Option C is a 20 cent increase, which is basically 11 and 11.5% increase, raising lunch prices to $1.90 to $2, and then multiple years coming back at it and relooking at it and determining if we need to raise lunches for going forward. The recommendation before you this morning is certainly looking at that, choosing option B for us to be able to move forward with regards to a 10 cent increase for the 2014-15 school year. You know, staff has worked extremely hard to make it work with the changes that we're being faced with, and very pleased from the district level and all the way down to the cafeteria workers, the managers, the cashiers, the bakers and cooks, all are implementing these changes and have done a great job with being able to do that going forward. At this point in time, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer those for you.
Any questions? Dr. Krupp?
Given that salaries will probably go up, that's going to be a cost factor that you need to include, I'm sure, for next year, and you've already probably looked at that. But my question had to deal with on page seven, smart snacks and school standards. You mentioned that implementing an interim rule, when does the full rule have to be put in place?
Well, whoops, I'm sorry.
Do we have a ticket price on that, or price of that, the cost of implementing the full rule?
Well, the full rule is, they're saying that we're going forward with that, that we're, we are being charged to implement that this year as it's written, and being able to implement that piece. The ticket price on that, again, looking at what we're able to offer and what we're going to be able to maneuver with our reimbursable meals, converting those into some à la carte items, those are the things that we're working and strategizing on right now. So we're still planning the 20% down on the à la cartes to be able to offset that piece. We don't know what the final rule is going to be. You know, that's what we're waiting on. They're saying that will come after probably August, September timeframe is what they're anticipating that to be released. It's just that we've argued the point with USDA on and on and on about how can we be responsible to implement the final rule, the interim rule, when we don't have the final rule to know exactly what we should be following?
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Nisi?
Any, excuse me, any chance of these rules changing? You know, I see all this whole grain stuff, and now it's like all the buzzwords now are about how bad gluten is now for you, and I see whole grain on here like crazy. So is it possible that in a couple of years, change in federal administration, we might start pulling back on some of these?
We hope, we pray that that will be the case. I mean, that's certainly, we've gone to the far extreme. We feel that there hopefully will be some releasing of some of the rules at this point in time. You know, what I hate doing is going back to that far, far extreme and now having the back step, and that's what we're being required to do right now, and it's not the ideal way to implement something like this.
Are there things that parents, as local leaders, I know this is a federal, very top-down mandate, are there things that we can tell our community members, our legislators, that we need them to do to get this lightened up on us a little bit?
Well, they're arguing the point in Washington right now. First Lady Michelle Obama is fighting, there's some talk right now, trying to release some of those rules. Any push in that regard would be most helpful at this point in time for us to be able to help with that.
Mr. Ziegler?
Yeah, from things I've been reading, clearly, there's a national outcry from schools and parents and everybody that this is just out of control. You'd think maybe somebody might have some bright idea like, hey, maybe some more PE classes, and we could allow them to eat a little fat in their diet. Over the top. And the last year, I think it was last year, you brought to us, when these changes came down, that they were, that the cost for the increase in nutrition was, were still deficient by about $0.32 a meal, and that that was netting something around, to your budget, about three-plus million of a hit, which you absorbed, and we did not raise lunch prices, obviously because you still had some success in the à la carte. But now with this projection, that's actually probably the biggest hit. I'm going to guess, you know, in an attempt for them to try and get kids to eat healthy, they're going to wind up, kids are just not going to be eating at all, and we're going to make the problem even worse. So clearly, we're going to have to do something we're not going to want to do, and, because we can't allow that to run negative without the revenue to supplement it, which I'm sure we'd love to do. When I speak to kids, I got to make perfectly clear here that one of the most important things here just doesn't go away. things here just doesn't go away, and they're all very concerned about ice cream. And you didn't mention anything about ice cream. And we need to make sure that's not no-fat ice cream. They're very, they're very clear on this when I speak to them. So can you assure me that ice cream is still available to them in the cafeteria?
I wish I could. We're, we're moving more toward yogurt and...
I'm sorry, we're going to have to take some board action on that. That's just unacceptable. I've made promises out there to children, and I'm going to, I'm going to have to stand by that. So we'll be talking about this later.
Well, it's interesting because you've lost both of my kids from this program. One of them's who's a little on the small side. These calorie requirements and no-fat requirements are clearly not good for her. She needs more fat and she needs more calories than this even allows. So you've lost my, huh?
Yeah, think of our athletes.
You know, and you do. You have athletes that need, actually, you know, if they're going to have a game that evening, they have a certain amount of things that they have to eat, and they're going to have their practice, and, I mean, it's crazy. And, and these kinds of requirements are basically because we are getting money from the federal government. That, that is why we are following these requirements, because we are being subsidized.
Correct. It's a federally funded program that has the rules...
So if you could find a way to do it yourself, you would have, you could do reasonable rules and reasonable foods.
Yes.
Chick-fil-A, yeah, right. I mean, I understand it would cost a lot of money, but I'm just saying, that is the reality.
Remember 60 percent of this, that first slice?
I understand that.
I did want to say too, you know, the thing that Kevin has mentioned before, all of this new nutritional standard carried with it, this whole issue of, before, there was a minimum calorie requirement. Now, there is a maximum...
Right.
...requirement that is almost exactly equivalent to what the minimum used to be. So to provide a meal for 550 to 600 calories on your grade's kindergarten through eighth grade doesn't give you a whole lot of leeway. And I know the board will remember that when we went to the lunches two years ago, I have to give kudos to Kevin and staff, remember, we couldn't even have dessert. We couldn't even get the cookie included. And now we have a whole grain chocolate chip cookie that at least we can provide...
Oh, yay.
...as part of the lunch, so.
Dr. Murray?
I just have a side comment, kind of on the lines of what Mr. Ziegler said. A number of years ago, I made a joke at one of our meetings about, we, we would get this obesity under control when we made fitness an academic requirement for graduation. And, and if we had had the courage to do that and bring back the genuine president fitness test of the 60s, if we would bring some of that back and make those actual require, academic requirements, we wouldn't have to be messing with the food. But people just don't want to exercise because it's not fun. And for those of you out in the audience who are old enough to remember those old presidential fitness tests, they were pretty grueling. And, but, you know, kids would much rather sit in their rooms and play on their computers and do those types of things today. So I guess you can have a computer, you can have a chocolate chip cookie, your, your choice.
Dr. Binkley?
Just to, in a wrap up, first of all, you guys just received information, and we released it, we are one of the gold standard for, for physical education, one of the few. We bumped from silver to gold for our physical education efforts in Brevard, so that, that at least is, is good. You're right. Kevin and our food service folks, who do a phenomenal job, get beat up periodically in board meetings on the Tasty Scale, if you will. And I, I think you've seen what it is. But I, again, I will point out, Kevin, we have been among the lowest lunch prices in the state of Florida, and will continue to be, even if we do, in fact, raise 10 cents. We raised it one time in 22 years. There are districts, everybody plays by the same federal rules, and there are districts all over this land supporting food services out of the operating budget and out of the capital budget. We do neither. They don't get a single operating penny, even are able to bring kitchen equipment into the kitchens so we're not hammering our capital budget. So I will tell you that, again, I'm sorry the Tasty Scale works against you, and we're going to have kids coming up here in September, and they're going to ask them, what would you change? And they'll say, I'd like a better lunch. But I want to recognize the great people. And first of all, they are working very hard to help the Tasty Scale, given the rules that we're playing by. And, and the fact that our, our participation has stayed where it is, is a testimonial to the work that you ladies are here, so I want to say thank you. But for the, for the management and the quality of looking at this operation every day, I want to thank you for that, because it, it pays dividends throughout our organization.
Thank you. Are there any other items on the information agenda that anyone wishes to speak about?
I'd like to have Judy and company talk about the refunding item, 33, H33, if we could. I know that the banks are at odds with each other and the federal government being fined, and most recently with Citigroup being fined billions of dollars, but that's probably a drop in the bucket as to what they made off the backs of investors back in '08. But if Judy could explain to us and the, and the general audience about refunding and perhaps some savings that we can have in the months to come if we refinance some of these outstanding bonds that we have.
Absolutely. I'll have some comments. And then, as you know, Joanne has joined us, but also, as you will remember, Mitch Owens, who is our financial advisor, and I know Mitch will have some things to share as well. We would be looking at probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about $60 million of refunding. It's not going to be near the size of the one that we did in the past. We won't materialize near as much as we did when it was almost $9 million. We hit the market when it was exactly just right, whenever we did the last one, fortunately. We are watching the market. Mitch has been communicating with us over the last few months, and we felt like the last time, we should come and get advance approval from the board if the market should turn to where we felt like it was the right time, that we go ahead and be able to take action at that point. Because we do bring, of course, the items to the board for two different meetings, we wanted to make sure that we had your approval in advance. We won't do this if it doesn't look like it will materialize in enough savings for us. As each time goes until the call date of those bonds, it would materialize in more savings for us. But we want to be able to jump on the market. You know, you kind of, you kind of play the pros and cons. We're looking at these bonds for 2016 being the call date. So do we go ahead and do that now, based on what the interest rate would be, the earnings that we would achieve, or do we wait until closer to the call date? And that's the kind of thing that we depend on our underwriting team, as well as our financial advisor, to guide us and to help us in making that decision. So I'd like to go ahead and have Mitch come up. He has a couple of slides, if he wishes to use those, and be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Right here.
Yeah, they're right here.
Mitch Owens, RBC Capital Market Financial Advisor to the district. Once again, it's a pleasure to be with you. As, as Judy indicated, we're here for a positive reason. That is that the market has gone in your favor once again, and we're pre-planning or trying to put everything into place so that we can take advantage of it, just as we did in 2013. And just as a quick reminder, as she said, in 2013, we were refunding some bonds that were callable in 2014, but because of the advantageous market, we were able to capture almost $3 million more of savings by including the Series 2006, a portion of them. Those are the bonds that we're looking at refunding now, all the remaining outstanding portions of the Series 2006, which accommodates about $60 million. The indications are, and I think we had a, the slide I'm putting up right now, are where we have been following this for quite some time. And if you'll look back in October of 2013, it shows you the wisdom of moving when you did in the spring of 13. The market dramatically went away from us. The savings were below positive. There were negative savings if we had done this transaction in 2013. We have seen a steady increase in two things. One, the interest rates on the long-term, where these bonds, mid to long-term, where these bonds range, are continuing to come down. There is a continuing look to security or strong security for purchases. There have, this is the time of the year, July, where you have a strong, excuse me, redemption of previously outstanding bonds. A lot of bonds are redeemed in July. Therefore, there's a lot of market money that needs to be placed back out there. So we're seeing a, one, a small amount of bonds available because of everybody took advantage, like you did, back in 2013 of lower rates, and we're also seeing an influx of dollars into the taxes that market. The offset to that is that everyone has predicted, economists, RBC's economists, every bank's economist, whatever, have predicted that rates are going to go up. We have seen a trend that rates have, as you indicate here, tended to go back down during the summer and then started to fluctuate into the June and July period. We're currently in today's market at about $3 million worth of savings, which is about 5 percent. The, I'll show you the next slide. I missed it. Oh, I'm sorry, the back one, okay. This is a slide we've shown you many times before, and it shows the, the market and the ups and downs of the market over the last seven years. And basically, what you're seeing is that we hit the market at a perfect good time in 2013. Rates went up and have trended back down and then have sort of leveled off. This is an indication, most people are feeling that the feds are going to back off when they're purchasing of treasuries and government bonds. We're going to see short-term rates go up, even though right now, we're sort of in a anomaly based on the, on the issues going on in Europe right now, where people are another flight to security, so they're buying US Treasury bonds, and those Treasury bonds' interest rates are going down, the yields are going down. We think that's going to change. Most people are predicting that Treasury, 10-year Treasury bonds will be up into the three to three, in a 330 range by the end of the year. Correspondingly, not that it moves in lockstep, but we think that long-term fixed-rate bonds are going to move a little slower. But we do think that long-term fixed-rate municipal bonds are going to go up. That's why we're asking here today to take advantage of the situation, allow us to prepare the necessary documentation, come back to you with that documentation in the August 12 meeting, so that we are prepared to take advantage of this marketplace. And as we say, we're at the 5 percent level now. The Government Finance Officers Association have set that 3 to 5 percent level as a recommended level. We have traditionally asked for a higher level of savings when we go out, especially on advanced refundings, because we know we want to take advantage of it, but we also don't want to just go into the market because it looks good. So we actually tend to try to look at the 5 percent as the minimum, as a higher level of standard. So we think we can get there, based on where we think markets are, but we need to be prepared to do that, and that's where we're asking you today. And I'll be happy to answer any questions I could.
Any questions? Mr. Ziegler?
I don't specifically have a question, because you, you all did a great job on the last refunding, but I just wanted to make a, a comment. The, last time we went through this, you then presented to us a refunding schedule, I believe, refunding coming over, I think it was two or three years. And I tried to make a, a point that we should use some of that for reducing our debt, and I made that point a little bit late. So I'm going to make the point now, I'm going to advocate again, that if we are successful in this, especially in light of anticipating the half-cent sales tax, I think that this refunding should be used for reducing debt. I just want to set that in mind, board members, so that we can analyze that coming into this, determine if we can make that happen. I think it'll go a long way towards achieving the goals we want.
Understood. Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Kup?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? No? Okay, are there any staff reports?
Ms. Henderson, there are no staff reports.
There are no additional public presentations? Are there any board member reports? No? Always. Mr. Ziegler?
Of, of course. Something that I want to report on that the board is aware of and that the board can be proud of, along with staff. Several years ago, I brought to the board that I thought there were some issues with our healthcare contract, our pharmacy contract, and the fact that it hadn't been out and bid for a while. And this board supported going out on a rebid for our pharmacy and some contractual changes that were in the bid process, one of which was retaining our rebates on pharmacy. And we have received our first rebate check, which the board is aware of, about $492,000 for rebates over three months. So this board has been very successful in aggressively improving our health insurance position, and there are many other things that, that can be done and that this board is directing us to look at, or staff to look at, to see if we can't, because everybody's experiencing higher costs, healthcare costs. And being that we are self-insured, we are certainly not immune to that, and we need to take a very proactive measure to try and circumvent that before we can't afford that anymore. And there are actually many government agencies that are stressing on how they're going to fund that. So that's a great success to, to staff and for rebidding that contract. Let's hope that trend continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Anybody else? Dr. Binkley, do you have a superintendent's report?
Nothing formal in that we don't have the data formally back, but I, you know, I want to share this. I've, I've mentioned many times up here how proud we are of some of our internationally accelerated curriculum, how our kids are, are performing in those things, how more kids are performing in them, and we're very proud of that, and rightfully so. But we, we, some of the preliminary data that we had related to our testing from last year, as the board knows, one of the cells in, two of the cells are the lowest-performing 25 percent kids. And how, did their learning gains, did they learn what they should have or more? And just preliminarily looking at that for us, we, we have seen a nice increase in, in reading and math, particularly at the elementary level, but, but in the secondary as well in those two cells. And so we're, we're very proud of the fact that it seems like for those kids who have struggled, you know, we've worked to try to bring them up, and so we're, we're really pleased with that. And we'll, we'll get the, it's not, we don't have the formal, but just in looking at all the schools, and Ms. Henderson, I showed this with you the other day, we're very proud of the fact that those cells are certainly going to go up for our kids who have struggled the most. And so when you see that success at the high end and also then for kids who have struggled, that, that's what we're very proud of. So we'll, as you know, later on, we'll bring all of the results to the board once we have them formally.
Thank you, Dr. Binkley, and we're looking forward to getting those results. Is there anything else?
No.
This meeting is adjourned. I want to show you some...